Great. I can hear you, you can hear me.
Good.
I think we can get started. Carol's agreed to chair today since she's here in person.
Thanks, Carol.
So Carol, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I would like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 13th, 2023 to order pursuant to ARS 38-43102. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this work session, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public. We'd go into executive session for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorneys on any item listed on the following agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. At this time, we can do roll call.
Marie Jones.
Present.
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Marshall Camp, who's not here. Dr. Ricardo Guthrie, not here. Bob Harris, sometimes he comes late, he's not here. Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Okay. At this time, any member, so this is the public comments section, but at any time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment on anything that's not on the agenda today? Hearing and seeing none, I will move on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, October, or August 23rd.
I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to public hearing. Item A is for Capstone Homes, requests preliminary plat approval for Timber Sky Block 5, located at 3345 West McAllister Ranch Road. It's a 101 lot, single-family subdivision on 17.84 acres in the medium-density residential zone.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commission. My name is Ben Mahia. I'm a planner for the city of Flagstaff. For your consideration today, we do have a preliminary plat request. Actually, we have two in a row, but we'll be presenting them separately. But for this one, we have preliminary plat requests for Timber Sky Block 5, filed by Capstone Homes at 3345 West McAllister Ranch Road. The proposal is for a single-family subdivision to create 101 single-family home lots on 17.84 acres in the medium-density residential zone. This is also within the resource protection overlay. Staff approved the preliminary plat in IDS on August 10th. The location is situated at the southern portion of the Timber Sky development area. To the north is Block 7B, which is in the R1 zone, as well as a portion of 3B, which is in the MR zone. To the south is Interstate 40. To the west is Block 6, which we'll be discussing at the next item. And to the east is Block 4 in the R1 zone. To give you a little bit of background, this is a process that started in 2016 with a zoning map amendment and annexation with a range, a proposed range of 910 units to 1,300 units. And this is between Blocks 5 and 6. This will be kind of culminating Phases 2 and 3 for the subdivisions. This is a proposal to bring 101 lots, single-family lots, to the market with connection proposed from McAllister Ranch Road. We have building envelopes used for resource protection and tracks holding corner lots to prevent the requirement for additional setbacks that would otherwise be required for corner lots. This is fairly typical of the development area. We also have a range of lots proposed. This is, some are around 4,500 square feet, ranging to 10,500 square feet. This is a PRD, or Planned Residential Development, which allows for more flexibility in the lot sizes and dimensions. The typical dimensions are 50 to 90, or 50 feet by 90 feet. And as we stated earlier, the PRD use type is going to be T4N2, and so the proposal conforms to that transect zone. This is in the resource protection overlay. The required resource protection for Timber Sky is 47.5. For this proposal, they're meeting 54% on this block. And the proposal does conform largely, substantially, with the medium-density residential zone and utilizes T4N2 standards. There is one area that we should address, which is the density. The range of a medium-density residential zone is 6 to 9 acre, or units per acre, and the proposal will bring 5.66 units per acre. The development agreement for the Timber Sky development area does allow for the transfer of density, and so that deficit would need to be made up elsewhere in the development area. And the lots are designed, once again, with building envelopes to meet those resource protection requirements. I realize that I gave you some additional information a little earlier, so I apologize for that. But we also have historic and cultural resource, which were cleared when this originally came in for the larger development area. So no additional requirements are made for this block in particular. And the open space and amenity areas were provided elsewhere in the Timber Sky development largely on, I believe it's Track B that provides the community center and picnic areas. Sidewalks are provided throughout the subdivision. We have conformance with the engineering standards. Since this is a larger site, the TIA was done with the original rezoning and no additional TIA was required for this subdivision. Additionally, the proposal is meeting the 8-inch water line and sewer line requirements. They are also providing on-lot LIDs, although there is detention met regionally for the development area. This proposal meets the preliminary plat procedures and application requirements, as well as minimum subdivision improvements, which include lot, street easement, and block design. Staff finds that the proposal meets the requirements of the zoning code, subdivision code, and engineering standards. Staff recommends that the commission forward this preliminary plat to council with a recommendation of approval. And we also have the applicant here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of staff?
Yes.
So Ben, on the density, when it comes in a little lower, and I know we talked about it this, I think, a year ago. I think it was also a Capstone plat. And there's only a few parcels left in Timber Sky. Where is that density going to be made up? I know, I think the answer to my question last year was staff keeps track of where the density is. Where do you think that'll end up being made up?
I can't say definitively, but I will say that we are tracking the density, and if Blocks 1 and 2 develop as proposed, we will actually have a small surplus, so to speak, for the density moving into phase 4.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I did. I wanted to ask about the LID by our retention stormwater, those little squares on the plat. That's the first time I've ever seen those. Can you, can you tell us about those?
My ability to explain the LIDs are fairly limited, but it is somewhat typical for the Timber Sky development area to provide on-lot LIDs. Perhaps the applicant can give you a little bit more information about those. Do you have specific questions about that?
No, I just kind of wondered how they worked, and I had never seen those before. And I noticed the other plat that is in the next agenda item doesn't have those. So I just wondered if that was due to the soil type or the topography of that particular block? Or I was just more curious as to how that worked. And if, and how those, and I saw that it was put into the DA that the homeowners association has to maintain those. And so I wondered how the logistics of that worked as well.
Yeah, thank you. I can see if the applicant might have, might be able to shed light on that.
John, you know I always have questions.
John Sutherland, I'm with Capstone Homes, representing the owners of this property today. Yeah, the on-lot LID is really designed as a part of the overall drainage. So there are, let's say, smaller basins within these parcels, within Timber Sky. We've had them in, I think, every parcel or every block that we've done in Timber Sky. 7B, 3B, 4, now 5 and 6. They are on private property, on the lots themselves, and they will be owned and maintained by the homeowners, not the homeowners association. Whereas the basins that you see in the channel on the kind of the west edge of parcels or Phases 1 and 2, that is HOA maintained. So those basins are pretty small. They're designed as like, I don't want to say a supplement, but part of the overall drainage system. Normally located on the downhill side of the lot to kind of collect the rainwater that kind of hits the lot.
Is it like a little drain in the back, the back corner of the lot?
Yeah, I guess you could describe it as a mini detention basin. So instead of a large one that you see in most communities, you'll see these in kind of a backyard, maybe not even recognizing them after a while that they are for detention purposes.
So are those on every lot or just some lots?
I want to say they're on every lot. Yeah, I, you know, I think that was the way it was designed initially, that they would go on every lot. And there's specific depth and size requirements for those.
So I work as a civil engineer, and I know a lot of times agencies don't like to see that. And the reason is, it's hard to enforce 10 years from now. How are you going to maintain that? So I'm curious, does the HOA have that responsibility in going in there and making sure that those are maintained?
No, it's totally on the property owner, the buyer of that lot. And it is disclosed or talked about in the public report documents that we give to buyers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was going to be my question too. So, you know, 20 years from now, a new homeowner buys the lot and doesn't clearly read that. How is it, you know, how do you maintain it? And what happens if a lot of people don't?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know where the ultimate authority on that comes, but it would be part of the, the design and location of those on the lot will ultimately be determined by the building permit. So even though it's graphically shown here, it's not necessarily exactly where it's going to wind up. So I guess that is part of the construction that's allowed on that lot, as well as their house and everything else, right? So I don't know if that means that it comes back to the building department if something occurs that that LID is not maintained in long term.
Yeah, because that would be my worry, that if there were a lot of homeowners that didn't maintain it, what happens in case of a flood?
Yeah, it's kind of the, it falls into sort of the same category as some other drainage, let's say, that occurs. So you might have stormwater that goes from one lot to another just because of the topography. So there is, you know, language there again in the public reports and all that about somebody can't dam that up either. So it's kind of, you know, part of that overall drainage requirement of a homeowner that buys a lot, that they can't, you know, change that without getting prior approval, of course. But is it possible that somebody would? Yes. I mean, you know, who knows what people might do. But we try to take the steps upfront to say, this is as much a part of your home, your lot, as anything else. That is, you know, like your driveway, you can't just kind of change that. It's part of your drainage system for your home, for the community in general.
So why go that way instead of having a community, some other? Why can't I think of the, you know, drainage?
Right. That's a good question. And that decision was done well before Capstone even bought into Timber Sky. I think it was part of the original drainage idea for the overall community. Like I said, you'll see that in other parcels within Timber Sky, existing parcels with homes on them, proposed. And then we have some under construction as well. And I think it was when they looked at the drainage, they said, okay, we have opportunities to do some of this on the lots, because if it wasn't, there would be larger swaths that would have to be bigger detention basins. So I think it was just a difference in design philosophy from the civil engineering level that originally occurred on Timber Sky.
And my personal preference is what you're doing, but then I worry about long-term effect, because I don't like the big drainage ditches, like on Cedar or Forest, whatever it is at that point. Those are like the ugliest thing in the world. So I appreciate that you're doing this. I just don't know how it's going to be.
Sure, some of these will be, let's say, even hidden behind fences or, you know, let's say landscaping that's around them. You may not even see them, whereas the bigger detention basins, obviously, you do.
All right. Mary, you have another question?
Yeah, I just had another question. Is this the same product that you're building at Adora that came to us last year on?
It's going to be, yes, similar to parcel 3B. It's that lot size, which we haven't, we haven't started building homes on 3B yet. We've broken ground on the land development there. So we're in the middle of the sewer utility installation. So that's, this will be kind of a carryover, the next step after 3B. 3B is only 39 lots. So with any luck, we'll sell through that quickly and be able to.
Those same floor plans? I remember when you were here last year, and the product hadn't really been fine-tuned as far as garages, and is there driveway parking and things like that? Has that been determined?
Yeah, I would say we're still working through that. We don't have anything we could really present to you right now, but we're going through that process. Also with Block 6, that you'll see here in a minute, same thing. We're kind of working through it. We have a rough idea. And I think generally, yes, you could say it will look similar to what you've seen Capstone build in Timber Sky already.
I would, I would make the assumption that most of these are going to be two-story homes, but will there be some one-story scattered? It's just the lot size, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have a combination of both. I can't really tell you what the mix would be at this time, you know, two-story versus a single-story, but we will offer both.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do you, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Marie? Okay. Do you have a presentation for us at all? Oh.
I believe Marie has a comment.
Oh, I thought she waved like, no.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Never mind.
It's muted. Thank you.
I thought you were, never mind. I'll get.
Okay, do you have a presentation at this time?
I don't. I, you know, to me, this is pretty straightforward, kind of the next step. We've all kind of seen the overall pre-plat for Timber Sky, so this is pretty much in conformance with that.
Okay. And is there any, is this the time that I would ask for community? Is there anybody from the public that has any questions or comments? Hearing none? Does somebody want to make a motion? I can go to a motion, right? Yeah. So, since there was no public comment, so.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move that we that we move this forward in accordance with the findings, the preliminary plat for Capstone Homes, Timber Sky Block 5.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion amongst commissioners or any questions? More questions? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes. And did we have a new commissioner that joined us?
Yes, Bob is online.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Item B, Capstone Homes, request for preliminary plat approval for Timber Sky. I want to say cell Block 6, but it's only Block 6, located at 3501 West McAllister Ranch Road. It's a 51 lot, single-family subdivision of 12.3 acres in a single-family residential zone.
Thank you. Sorry, I got the wrong notes out, sorry. As you've already mentioned, or we've already discussed, this is the second preliminary plat from Capstone Homes, directly adjacent to the one we just discussed. This is preliminary plat approval for Timber Sky Block 6, located at 3501 West McAllister Ranch Road. This is to provide 51 single-family home lots on 12.3 acres in a single-family residential zone. Just as before, this is also in the resource protection overlay zone. And staff approved this preliminary plat on August 10th. Located just to the west of Block 5, we're looking at a site that is bounded to the north by Track B in the R1 zone, to the west by Track C in the public open space zone, to the east by Block 5 in the MR zone, and to the south by Interstate 40. I'm not going to go into the background. It is the same as we had previously discussed for Block 5. But this is a proposal to bring 51 single-family home lots taking access from McAllister Ranch Road. We have several tracks actually providing some additional open space, as well as Track A providing drainage. This is in the resource protection overlay zone and does require resource protection. This requirement would be 47.5%. On this project, they are actually only providing 46.8%. And so the deficit of the required preservation does need to be met elsewhere in the Timber Sky development area. This conforms with the zoning standards for single-family residential and T3N2 zone. The density proposed is 4.06 units per acre, and the range allowable for the R1 zone is 2 to 5 units per acre. The lots are designed to meet resource protection requirements using building envelopes. They are applying, or they are applying PRD standards for T3N2, which does give them the flexibility to create smaller lot sizes and use less restrictive setbacks on individual lots. The range of sizes are approximately 6,500 square feet to 14,000 square feet, and the typical lot dimensions are 55 feet by 115 feet. And again, this is utilizing the setbacks for T3N2. This, once again, we've already reviewed the cultural resource of the area with the larger Timber Sky development area. And open space and amenities have already been provided elsewhere in the development area. Sidewalks are provided, and there is connection between 5 and 6, or Blocks 5 and 6. This does meet engineering standards and will conform with civil engineering plans as proposed in this subdivision. Or just as we discussed for Block 5, there's no additional TIA for this site, and they are utilizing 8-inch lines for water and sewer. There is, as we discussed on the other one, there is actually no on-lot LID, but there is an LID for detention provided with Track A and regionally. It does meet preliminary plat procedures and application requirements, as well as subdivision improvements identified in the public systems analyses, which include lot design, street design, easement design, and block design. Staff finds the proposal meets the requirements of the zoning code, subdivision code, and engineering standards. Staff recommends that the commission forward this preliminary plat to council with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you for both of these presentations, and you did a great job. And I'm going to open up the floor for questions of staff.
Just a comment. It was really nice to see the extra tracks and the preservation of the natural ponderosas in there, that that, this block allowed. I know there wasn't really much to preserve on the other block. And I saw that there was, you know, a tree in every front yard, regardless of where the preservation was. So I just wanted to say I noticed, and it was nice to see.
So the only comment, and I should have made it on the last one, was that my hope is that these aren't, these are going to be, I don't want to say affordable homes, but more median affordable homes for our community. That's my only comment, so, that's my hope. Are there any other questions or discussion?
I have, I have one question. I don't know if you can see my hand. It's just a follow-up on the tree question. I was wondering from the applicant, how precise at this stage of the game are the, are the tree removal designations? I wonder, just because as I'm looking over there, and I wonder, well, could you, you know, are there a few trees here that could remain? Or, you know, I don't know how, how, how the homes will be filling the lot. But I was just curious about how precise those are at this point.
So, I mean, there's the possibility for changes to be made to the resource protection plan, but largely, this should be in conformance when it comes in for, for final resource protection with the civil plan set. And, and final plat.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. Is there a presentation from Capstone? Okay. Are there any public comments? Public. Hearing none, I will open the floor for a motion.
I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, that the planning commission, in accordance with staff findings, recommend approval for item, let's see. Now I have to find the item. Sorry, I'm looking for the item number. I should have had that up, I have too many screens up here. Hold on, hold on.
I don't, I don't know that it has a exact item number. That might be why you're not finding it.
Well, the case number, I just wanted. PZ 230008901, that commission recommended to council for approval in accordance with staff's findings.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further commission discussion or questions? Hearing none and seeing none, I'm going to move to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion has carried. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Item C, Plan Interpretation for Region Plan Goal T7.
Hello, commissioned. I'm going to pull up my presentation.
Marie, are you on mute? I, if you can mute, I'm getting some feedback, so. Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, my name is Michelle McNulty. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Flagstaff. I am doing this presentation today on behalf of Sarah Decter, our Comprehensive Planning Manager, who is in a conference today. So I will do my best to answer questions that you have, but I also have members of Mountain Line with me that can also provide any information after the presentation. These are pretty wordy slides, but there's only five, so it won't be very long. So the Flagstaff Regional Plan has several policies and goals that speak to transit. I won't go through all of these in, you know, in detail, but in general, it's to provide a high-quality, safe, convenient, accessible public transportation system where feasible to serve as an attractive alternative to single-occupant vehicles. And then it goes on to talk about how we cooperate with our transit providers and supporting different lines and accommodations. Recently, Mountain Line passed their Flagstaff in Motion, their 5-year planning. Mountain Line is the transit authority responsible for operating a transit system within the city. They update their plan every five years, and it includes plans for how to improve services, mobility, and to provide transit access, thus implementing the regional plan goals. So, why we're here today is how, we want clarification on interpretation of, how do we determine the conformance with Goal T7, that primary goal that I read, to provide that high-quality, safe, convenient, accessible public transportation system, and the relationship between our regional plan and the 5-year plan. And to better address that and to work with our partner, we came up with an interpretation. And so what we've proposed is language that says, "The city staff considers the Flagstaff in Motion Plan and engages Mountain Line in discussions on how development proposals may contribute to a high-quality, safe, convenient, accessible public transportation system as part of the city's broader evaluation of whether a development proposal conforms to the regional plan. Applicants for zoning map amendments, annexations, and other discretionary decisions are encouraged to review Mountain Line's 5-year transit plan and engage in discussions with Mountain Line early in the application process as part of their consideration of a proposed project's contribution to the needs of the public transportation system, especially as related to Goal T7 and associated policies." So, why am I here? And I think a lot of you are actually newer Planning and Zoning Commissioners, and maybe have never seen this come before you. But as a reviewing body of the regional plan, it's been a practice that Comprehensive Planning, when we do further clarify a goal or policy or interpretation, that we actually bring it to this body to make sure that we're on the same page and that we're aligned with you, and that you agree with that interpretation before we move forward. It's, it's basically, we're asking for your endorsement. But we're also asking not just for your endorsement, but any other feedback or request for, you know, anything else that you would like to see as you're going to be reviewing the zoning cases and annexations that are going to relate to this policy. And before I pause and ask, you know, give you a chance to ask questions, the next step is we are going to take this interpretation to council. And with that, we're also taking a resolution that just is kind of celebrating that Mountain Line has adopted this 5-year plan, and it also talks about how, not just through zoning cases that we're going to incorporate that, but also in our capital projects and other efforts that we move forward with, transportation demand management, and just other priorities that are really focusing on that big shift. So, just so you know where we're headed with this. And with that, I'm here for any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to sort of summarize, I think, what you're asking for us. Yes. So, as I listen to what you read, and when you have an applicant that wants rezoning, annexation, all of that, you're trying to encourage them to embrace and get on board with the Mountain Line as they move forward, correct? Well summarized. Okay. And increase ridership, I assume? Or are you looking for new bus stops, or both? It, we're kind of all of the above. And it's going to, it's going to, I think, change on, depending on the project, but there's a lot of, it's... In the short, yeah, that's it. So we want to make sure that when we're looking at different projects, we would like to encourage all development applications, even if they're not going through a discretionary review, to look at the transit plan. And if there's an opportunity, say there's a, a rapid, I'm going to use the wrong word, and I'm going to apologize in advance, but say there's like a, like a, one of their main systems that has frequent routes on it, and you're doing a new development, and there's no bus stop there. And it's, and, you know, the plan really calls for a bus stop in that area. We're really encouraging the applicants to work with Mountain Line to say, okay, can you even just reserve an easement so they can put the bus stop there? So it could be as simple as just having that conversation. It could be a conversation about providing passes to tenants if it's a residential development to help, you know, remove barriers of being reliant on just single occupancy cars. And it could be when we're working on capital improvement projects that we're committing to, working with Mountain Line, to make sure that the design of the road accommodates slip lanes, or turn lanes, or pullouts for the buses. So it's kind of broad, but it's, it's basically saying that through every step of the way, we want to make sure that if a development is in an area that has something addressed in the 5-year plan, that we're engaging with Mountain Line. Okay, that, that makes sense. One of the things that hits me is maybe a missed opportunity is when there are developments, new developments, and as you said, whether they're coming for discretionary changes or not, is instead of, well, in addition to maybe providing, you know, free passes, you know, sometimes I wonder that if people just don't realize what the bus schedule is, how easy it might be, you know? I'm wondering, you know, coming from a marketing background, if there's an opportunity to, when people move in, to give them actually a printed bus schedule, you know? Where it's in their face as opposed to them having to go online and figure it out. If there's just some awareness that could be created and requiring the developer, the builder, to provide that at move-in. At least get, get that in front of them, you know? Just a suggestion. I think on the permitted cases, we might be hard-pressed to require it, only because it's like, how do we enforce that? But I really appreciate what you're suggesting, and maybe there is some ways that we can work with Mountain Line to, you know, through, I'm just thinking of different processes that people go through through the development stages, that we can give them those links and really encourage landlords and developers to do that. That was my really long-winded way of saying, yeah, I think that there's a possibility there. And I think that the way that this interpretation is written leaves the door open for all types of, of creative solutions and how we can really work better with Mountain Line. And, and not on the agenda, but just kind of in the spirit of that. And you'll see my face again in the near future talking about a project that we're kicking off, the Land Availability, Suitability, and Code Analysis Project. And it's something that Planning, Housing, and Sustainability are actually partnering with, along with Mountain Line, to, one, do an analysis of all of our land to understand, what do we even have? And what is the suitability of its development? So, what is the infrastructure that it would take to bring that online for development? Where are there missed opportunities for infill? And then really looking at our codes, all of our development codes, through the lens of housing and sustainability, and where can we streamline them? Where there's conflict? Because, believe it or not, some of our codes are not in alignment with one another. And do all of our codes, you know, are they really, are they really moving forward these policies? But through that, we've brought Mountain Line as a partner. They wanted to do a similar project, and they're going to join us. And so we'll be doing the code analysis also, where we can look at design codes in our zoning code, as well as, you know, engineering standards of also incorporating transit standards in those areas where it's appropriate. So a lot of exciting things are happening.
Thank you. Thank you for all that information.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm thinking a year down the road, how we apply this. So, as I read this, it's, it's an encouragement, which is not a very strong thing. And so we have an applicant come in. How do we say, were, did you actually do this and measure it? And how do we actually hold them accountable for that?
So, that's a very good point. And so from that standpoint, that will be coordinated. We have the Single Point of Contact, who typically takes our developments through, from the, the planning side, from the IDS. I think you're very familiar with that process, or you've gone through it. And so I think through there, we have the coordination with Mountain Line. We have very open lines of communication. We're going to be checking in. And I think that Mountain Line will hopefully call us and say, we've never heard from them. And so they are, they are part of the IDS process. They're not a formal reviewer, because they don't have code at this time. But they are a general reviewer, so that's an opportunity where we can have kind of information to point them to that direction. But also, it, it provides them the opportunity to see what developments are coming through and what processes. So, is this just going to go from site plan to building permit? Then they know that's a permitted use. So, kind of what line are we walking versus the more involved process of a zoning case? But to your point about the enforcement, this is, and that's, that's it, right? Like, plans do have more of that general wishful language, but that's why we're working with them on the code process, so that we can actually start to get some of this stuff in code, so it's more enforceable on permitted projects as well as the, the more discretionary.
Thank you. So I, I think part of it then, it goes back to us to make sure.
Yes. Takes a village.
Thank you. And then there's questions. Marie, did you have a question? Or Bob?
Yes, I do, thank you. This is maybe more of a comment than a question, although, Michelle, I'd love to get your thoughts on this, or the Mountain Line people. I'm going to use an example, which was the NIH project. The, I see in the Flagstaff in Motion Report, which, I'm sorry, I haven't read up till now, so this might, info might be in there. But I'm looking at that line that shows a potential line going up to a future NIH site. And, so this is recommended by this report. But I, this is, I guess my question has to do with the relationship between, you know, the funding, the recommendation for something, and whether or not there's any kind of plan or funding for it. You know, in terms of how we make a decision, I mean, a lot of people might look at that and say, well, this, this goal is not met. But I also hear you saying that if there's any movement in the direction of it, then that might be considered as conforming somewhat to the goal. I, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are about that, because a lot of times these questions come up for commissioners. And, and some of the goals in the regional plan can seem really vague at those moments.
Yeah, and so I'm going to, I'm going to say a couple of things about the regional plan, and maybe general with the spirit of the NIH. And then I do see that Kristina Rubokava is on here, and she might be able to speak to some of the more nuances about, you know, proportionality and really what we can ask to be paid for. So just kind of letting her know, I might call on her. But, so to your point about, you know, kind of the, the different goals, I mean, one of the challenges we have with the current regional plan, in my opinion, is that we have a lot of goals and policies. And I think it's actually like 598. That's a lot of goals and policy for any one project to actually meet and pencil. And, and, and it's, it's, you know, so we struggle trying to get things when we have so many priorities. And so, we don't tend to get exactly what we want, because we're trying to give a little bit. Because we do have land use law that we have to look at, and the proportionality, when we are asking people to provide additional things with discretionary approvals. But to your point, yeah, a lot of the times we are looking at, are you at least, like, for instance, if there is a bus route there, maybe that bus route isn't funded, but at least are you providing a bus stop or pedestrian connections from your site to bus stops? So that in the future, when there is funding for that bus stop, there is a connection, or that you are providing that. Those types of things are moving us in the direction of conformance. But when we're talking about a, a line that's not funded, that gets a little bit trickier. And that's where I'm going to call on my, my legal. Christine, I don't know if you want to, if you want to speak to that at all. And Mountain Line, I would also invite you to come up and say anything.
Sure, Michelle, I'm happy to. This is Kristina Rubokava, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Yeah, when, when it comes to, to items being funded, I think what Michelle said about proportionality is really key. And the city cannot require mitigation of anything except for, you know, those elements that are caused by the development. So we mitigate impacts only, which is, which is a little different than what we're seeing with Mountain Line. And that's why you're seeing this plan interpretation written this way. And I know another commissioner had mentioned, you know, it seems a little vague with, you know, the words encouraged. And what this really is, is it's a good faith statement of how the city looks to include Mountain Line's plan to the extent of, of asking developers when they come in to at least consider it. It's not that we can require conformance with that 5-year transit plan, and it's not that we can require developers to fund Mountain Line's obligation. But as Michelle said, looking to see where within their development they can accommodate space in particular for future Mountain Line plans.
Does that answer your question, Marie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Mary, you have something?
I just wanted to add on to the idea about the number of goals and policies. And, you know, maybe because it is so broad, you know, I've always kind of said to myself, it's almost any development can find the findings, because there's so many goals and policies to choose from. So if they were narrower, and, you know, if Mountain Line or contributing to Mountain Line was one of the primary...
was one of the primary choices for them in that section of code to assist with, you know, it, it almost starts to encourage or force, guide them along that path to, all right, let's, let's choose this. Let's help Mountain Line to fulfill this area of goals and policies. So that's just my observation.
Thank you for that. And then I just want to, you know, remind you, I know you guys are well aware, we're, we're working on the regional, the Flagstaff Regional Plan update. And I think that that's a good time to think about that as commissioners, you know, as you are reviewing cases. I think our code needs a bit of a diet, and I think our regional plan needs somewhat of a diet to keep us focused on, you know, some key goals so that it is easier to really make bigger strides in where we want to go as a community. And I think making it easier for you all as commissioners to, you know, have a very, you know, kind of defined group of priorities that we really want to meet, work towards. And so I encourage you to kind of think that way as your involvement through that regional plan update.
Thank you. I do have a question. What is the current? Is there anything about a motion plan in the current guidelines? Or is this just the whole thing totally new?
So when you say guidelines, are you referring to like the zoning code standard?
The zoning code standard as it is now. I'm kind of looking at this as a guideline, not a code yet.
I see. So currently, I don't believe that we have, and I'm going to look at Alex. I don't think we have anything in our zoning code that requires anything for transit. Okay.
So one of, one of the things we talk about is a parking reduction incentive. And one of the ways you can get reduced onsite parking is by being within a quarter mile, not as the crow flies, but at, along a sidewalk improved pathway to a bus stop. And so that's one of the ways we do that. Sometimes that's a little bit, you know, luck of the draw of where your site happens to be located, and how close to a bus stop you are. But that's, that's kind of the one that jumps to the top of mind, yeah.
So this gives everything a little bit more beef?
It does. And it's kind of like the first start to like the next steps that we're taking, like the code analysis project, that we'll start looking at our codes. And where, where does it make sense to start inserting really clear direction that we can point to? Because once it's in code, then it's no longer discretionary. And we can say, no, you are, you are required to provide that. Or, you know, even with our own designs, it really puts, you know, it's up to us then as a city entity to really make sure we're including those facilities in our designs. Which I think they're doing a good job at, but we can always improve.
So something that is... Something that is currently planned now would not go under the new code, but anything, once there might be a new code, it would come under the new code?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Is there any, are there any other questions? Any other discussion items?
And so my ask of you all, if there's, if you're happy with the way that that interpretation is written, really my ask today is, do you endorse it as written? Or would you like additional consideration or revisions before you endorse?
So do we need a motion to endorse it? Or, you know, I'll ask for any comments or clarifications? Or if you have anything to add to this? Go ahead, Mary.
So without code changes, we really can't ask for you to get any deeper into this more than your verbiage as written. Is that correct? Is, we're kind of at that fulcrum of, this is as good as it can get right now until code can be rewritten?
That's, that's it, yeah.
So is this, then Alex, do we need a motion on this to endorse it?
Yes, let's do that.
So I will welcome a motion, if anybody has a motion.
I'll make a motion. Let me just find the, the, does this have a number? This doesn't have a number on it. I'm going back and forth between the, okay. So this doesn't have a project number. So I'll just say that I would move that the commission forward this plan interpretation to the city council for approval as written.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there, is there any further discussion?
Is that the endorsement you were looking for?
That's the endorsement I was looking for, yeah.
And I doubt there are any public on this, but we do probably need the public comment, too.
Ah, good call.
Is there any comment from the public? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay. Hearing no nays, the motion has passed.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Great presentation, too. Next on the agenda...
Sorry, just a minute.
Oh, does this actually go to council?
So it will, so my understanding from Sarah is that these endorsements don't, they usually just stop with you guys. This one is going to council via the resolution. So it's an attachment to the resolution that I discussed earlier and that kind of the one that's more of an agreement across the board, just beyond zoning and beyond the general plan. So we're attaching it kind of more as an exhibit, but it doesn't have to go for their formal approval.
So do we need to change our motion and review, or is that okay to lay this?
No, we were just, we were looking for some clarification. We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Oh, Christina has her hand up.
Okay, Christina?
Yeah, sorry. Because it doesn't go to council, and the motion was to recommend to council, if we could just get a clean motion to endorse the interpretation as written, that would be wonderful.
So I do have a question on that. Do we need to, how do we do, remove the first motion then? Do we have to vote to remove that first motion?
I would just, maybe when you state the motion, make a motion to, given, with the information that I have given you, make a motion to rescind the prior motion and to endorse the interpretation as written. And I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's all right.
Thank you for the clarification.
I'm going to go back to Marie to ask if you would do that?
Sure.
Rescind the prior motion since you were the motion maker?
Yes.
And make the new motion? Thank you.
Okay, so this motion, and this motion is to rescind the prior motion and to, let's see, endorse this interpretation as written.
And to be added to the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2030 website?
To be added to the 2030 regional plan.
Okay, and is there a second to this motion now? I think so.
I'll second, thank you.
So Mary has seconded the motion. Any further discussion about this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, the next item on the agenda is just miscellaneous items to and from commission members? Is there any, any discussion, or?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. And commission members are pretty quiet, so I'll assume they have nothing at this time. And so we are ready for adjournment. It is 5:01. Thank you.